Yeah, so um yeah, I think we can start. I I saw like more people jumping on this call. Um it's actually pretty early in the morning, ten AM. But thanks, uh thank you very much, Carter, for um giving us this speech. And um yeah, I just pass my mic to you and hopefully like if anyone has any suggestions or questions, um feel free to type in a in a chat box. Um and and I think later, um at maybe at the end of the session, we're gonna connect all these questions and then we have a Q and A sections that were like Carter could actually, um you know, give you the answers of each questions. Um, thank you, everyone, and I just pass my mic to you.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, uh, thank you so much. Uh, really appreciate it from ABCD uh for, you know, uh, given this opportunity to to talk to all of you guys. Um, just so I have kind of a rough understanding on. I'm not sure if if hosts can can help out with this, but like roughly like how technical like is our audience familiar with ZK?
Um, maybe you could type one if you're very familiar with it and type two if you're not familiar and type three if you know nothing about ZK.
I appreciate that.
Great. All right.
Okay, cool. Yeah, rough rough um barometer, hoping that that's representative of of everyone, but uh let's get into it. So let me just click on present, sorry. Okay, great. So today we're gonna be um talking about Parth, which is our parallel ascending recursive tree hierarchy, which is our state topology and state circuit symbiosis that we use at QED to get infinite scalability. Um, and yeah, uh with QD you get fast secureable verifiable verifiable computation for all, and we'll go into a little bit about what that means and how we do it in today's presentation. So a little bit about myself first. Um, so I'm the founder and CEO of QED. Uh, as in my previous life, uh shall we say, um, I was quite a well-known uh reverse engineer. Um, I was a member of Xbox Underground, which within the Call of Duty um modding and hacking community, uh we were we were quite well-known. Um, I also built Mod P, which is the world's first and only modding crap, modding platform for Minecraft Pocket Editions. That's the mobile version of Minecraft. Um, we had over twenty millions installs across Android and iOS and built a developer community of over a hundred fifty thousand mod developers. Um, yeah, so like I guess more recently I led Rapid, which is a proof of state uh block producer. Um, in our heyday, we had over two and a half billion dollar states to our proof of stake nodes and process over one hundred fifty million unique transactions on our infrastructure. So yeah, been in the blockchain space for a little bit, but uh you know, also have quite a long security background. So today we're gonna be talking about scaling and um you know, before we get into that, it's probably helpful for us to talk a little bit about why blockchain has failed to scale in the past. Uh, and in general, it boils down to the lack of parallel execution. And there's a very good reason for this. We'll go into a couple of the reasons why it didn't make sense before, but uh just generally the state models that we use with blockchains are highly serial. So whenever, let's say, I have a block with ten transactions, I need to process the first transaction before I start executing the second transaction and so on and so forth. So the actual block time is the sum of the time that it takes to process each individual transaction. Uh, and in addition, for every full node in our non-ZK blockchains, we're running every single transaction on every full node so that all the full nodes like agree upon what the final state of the blockchain should be after a given block is processed. So uh the main reason here why we don't see these of perhaps some of our um more uh shall we parallelizable or scalable state topologies within um one block. Oh, do you mind muting? Mike, I think maybe some crashing. I think wrong one, but uh yeah, all good. Um anyways, so in the past, like obviously with Web two, we know that there are ways to build highly parallelizable, um you know massively distributed systems and still have state. Uh, the main reason why we didn't see that with Web three in the past isn't that, you know, blockchain builders don't know how to build these kinds of distributed systems, but rather because if we, you know, let's say required, I don't know, um big server farm or lots and lots of nodes um that, you know, would break up and parallelize each block, it would raise the barrier of entry for people that want to start full nodes. So in the past, it makes total sense why we didn't have a parallelizable state model, because at the end of the day, you know, the more, I guess, parallelization you have um and the more work that each full node needs to be able to process, the less decentralized your network is gonna be because the fewer people are gonna be able to actually run full nodes. So made sense in the past, but with a serial state model, we have like one block times are a function or or block times linearly grow um as the amount of blockchain activity increases. And also crucially, the more nodes we add, um doesn't actually affect our overall TPS for the chain. Um, so so yeah, made sense in the past. And if we look at our layer two friends, which, you know, we're big fans of ZK, not so much on the optimistic side for reasons we may get into if we have time in a little bit. But um what we've seen with other ZKVMs is that they're really just taking the existing architectures that we've, you know, seen from Ethereum, a few other ecosystems, Starknet has their own language, but still the same state topology and uh lack of scaling that we saw on layer ones in the pre-ZK era. So uh, yeah. Like um if we look kind of why we need to process transactions serially with existing blockchain state models, like the easiest way to dive into that um is to just sort of look, okay, let's say we have a USDT smart contract and um you know, if we process the transactions one by one, in this case, Bob is sending Susan twenty dollars, Mary is Mary is sending five dollars to Bob, and Bob is also trying to send sixty dollars to John. Looking at their balances, we can see that Bob only has sixty dollars to spend. So the first transaction he'll lose twenty dollars and Susan will gain twenty dollars. That's correct. Second transaction will gain five dollars and Mary will gain five or well, Mary will lose five dollars rather. And then the third transaction will fail because he's trying to spend more money than he has. But of course, if we run these transactions in parallel, all of them believe that the current state of the blockchain is the start of, you know, the start state at the very beginning of the block, so all transactions succeed, meaning that we need some way to do like a back off or to mark, you know, whether or not certain transactions have accessed different state slots. Some blockchains such as like SUI, um Aptos, Solana, a few others have gone this route of trying to parallelize. But ultimately, although they've claimed like to be able to process hundreds of thousands of transactions per second, if you look in reality for real world transactions, um such as these token transfers and what we actually see on their main net, they're only able to do like less than one thousand TPS. So uh I think Aptos has done a little bit better, maybe four thousand TPS, but still in the context of Web two, where we wanna be able to have millions of concurrent users interacting with an application at once. It's just, it's not even close to what we'll need. Um, yeah, and that's because, of course, we have race conditions. So yeah. Um, the main sort of question that initially started development of QD is, is there is there anything we can do better um without any security compromises? So obviously, we don't want double spending. We want to prove every transaction. So we wanna enter a block with a succinct proof of all the transactions within within that block. Um, and uh the answer that we came up with, yes. So we can see how we achieve that. Yeah. Um, in order to achieve it, we need a fundamentally different stage apology. Specifically, we need a state apology that gives us hard guarantees against race conditions for different users. So you can imagine that, um let's say I'm a user and I want to submit ten transactions within a block. So these ten or ten transactions on QED with Parth, we we actually execute them serially and prove them on the user's own machine. And then once, um I guess, shall we say, once they've generated their end cap, we'll see this in a in the next slide. But uh yeah, once they've they've proved their transactions locally, they submit an end proof to the chain and uh we go about updating the global state. So um yeah, with Parth, you have a separate state tree for each contract for each user. Um, and as you're transacting, the users uh different transactions can only write to their own state trees. However, you can read from anyone else's state tree as it was at the beginning of the block. So you can imagine that if I'm doing a token contract and we'll show a little animation of how this works in a second. But if I have a token contract, rather than as I do a transfer mutating someone else's balance, I'm actually burning the tokens and then marking a leaf within my state tree for a given token contract that says I have burnt these tokens in Bob's name, right? And then at the start of the next block, Bob can then prove that I burned these tokens for him and then, you know, go about spending the tokens or do whatever he likes. So so yeah, um the rules, however, which update each contract function tree. So we can see here on our state diagram that there's a given contract ID, which is a leaf within this global contract tree. Um, all these global contract trees have corresponding leaf and separate contract state tree for each user. And the rules which govern the updates to each contract state tree are defined as a Merkle tree, who leaves are the hash or the fingerprint of the verifier data for some zero knowledge circuit. So currently, we support like a few different proving backends that you can use to actually execute, you know, different contract functions. Um, so we have a Plonky two-ish compatible um proving backend for circuits that have low constraints or really functions that are rather simple or reasonably simple um for very long-running functions. We also have a a Stark based VM. Um, we'll have support for other proving backends uh in the future. But the main sort of takeaway here is, um you know, when we generate a contract function circuit and eventually generate a proof that proves correct contract execution, what that contract function circuit is doing is saying that, given this user, given this initial block state and given the user's current user state trees root, my contract state tree has legally transitioned from root X to root Y. And we'll see an example of how that works um in a little bit. But main thing here is that because we have these hard guarantees against race conditions, um you know, within or or user-wise race conditions, shall we say, uh we're able to actually construct our blocks in parallel. And we can see how that works. So um at the very beginning of a local proving session, the user will generate what we call a user proving session, start session proof or UPS start session proof. And what that's gonna do is it's gonna prove that within this global state tree that there exists a given user who has a user leaf or user snapshot hash with a given public key, a checkpoint ID, and um specifically a a certain state root for their users' contract trees. Um, so it's the root of the tree which contains all of their contract state trees, and that's gonna start that session. And then for each additional proof here, whenever we see one of those lines, that means that we have a recursive verification. So for instance, this UPS transact group is gonna recursively verify the previous cyclic group or the previous proof in this chain. And it's going to enforce that the checkpoint hash, which is the hash of the, you know, full state of the blockchain, is gonna be the same at each transition across all of these different proofs. And it's also gonna enforce that whatever assumptions it makes about the current state of the user are reflected in the end state of the user of the previous cyclic proof. So um and then the UPS transact group in this case is going to also recursively verify contract function proof. And it's going in that contract function proof, or rather in the public inputs of that contract function proof, we have the start and end state among a few other things that we'll go into. Um, but main point of that contract function proof is to say that the state root of a given contract state tree has mutated from root A to root B. Right? So we we know that this operation is legal and the way that we can check if the operation is legal is by computing the fingerprint or hashing the verifier data that's passed um along with the proof to this UPS transact. And then we also provide a Merkle proof which links our tested checkpoint root with the particular fingerprint of whatever function we called. So we've ensured that, one, the contract state tree has legally updated from state X to state Y. Um, because we've shown that there is a proof that says it's okay, update the state from X to Y. And we know that the proof's verifier data is in that contract function tree um whose Merkle root was set upon deployment of the contract. So we know it's legal, you know, legal function call, legal mutation. And then we also have a delta Merkle proof, which is gonna update the leaf within the user's contract tree. And this user's state leaf or the root of their user contract stream is gonna be carried along throughout these um cyclic proofs or throughout this user proving session. And um at each stage in the user proofing session, as you can see, we're recursively verifying the previous proof as well as an auxiliary proof. So once we have our end cap proof, uh I'm assuming everyone's familiar with recursive verification. So like a proof which verifies a proof. Maybe I can really quickly pop over to here. So we all agree that um, you know, a zero knowledge proof can essentially verify any correct computation, any, I guess, shall we say, limited runtime length or 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 any any fixed size Turing complete computation. Um, but yeah, so if we have, uh if we initially generate proofs A, B, C, and D, and then I generate a proof which recursively verifies proof A and proof B, and then I also generate a proof in parallel, which recursively by verifies proof C and D, and then finally we generate a proof with which recursively verifies proof E and F, then we can say that verifying proof G is equivalent to verifying proof A, B, C, and D because they've all recursively verified each other. So main point here is that this end cap proof over here, so I'll just pause that animation right over here. So so this end cap proof over here, verifying that proof is equivalent to verifying all these proofs that started. And note that this end cap proof in its public inputs has the user's ID, a few other things we'll go into the full table, but user ID, the leaf that it started with or the assumption that it made about the state of the blockchain um at the start of this user proving session um as well as the new state root for the user. So we then take all those end caps from the users and they submit them to our decentralized proving network. And then the decentralized proving network, all they're going to do is take in delta Merkle proofs that show that the user's state has transitioned from one root to another and link that to the nearest common ancestor of another proof, which is being recursively verified by this, you know, we call them global user tree aggregation proofs or these decentralized proving nodes, the work, I guess, shall we say, the work that they're doing. Um, so they're taking two of those user proofs, in production, actually four, but in the animation, let's say two for simplicity. They're taking two of those user proofs recursively verifying them and then also proving that the um transition within this larger global user tree um successfully transitions from some state root to a new state root. Specifically, it's the the nearest common ancestor Merkle cap. So you can imagine if we have these four users that submit transactions within a given block, um you may have a a proof um in the decentralized proving network, which is going to recursively verify proofs from these two users as well as a Merkle proof proving up to this node that this leaf has changed and this leaf has changed. And then in the public inputs of our proof, we're going to have the start cap, so that root as it was for that Merkle cap, it's not really the root um as it was at the start of the block and its new value at the end of the block. And we're gonna continue this process until we have a single proof that proves that the entire global user tree has transitioned from state root A to state root B. So yeah, so once we have a proof that the user tree's root has mutated successfully, we now have a proof of all the transactions within a given block. So so yeah, it's great. Um, but yeah, uh most importantly, I wanna stress this because transactions from two different users can't write to each other's state trees and because they can only read the the state of other users as it was at the start of the block, we're guaranteed to have no user-wise race conditions. So as you can see, when the user proves their transactions locally, they do execute the transactions serially. So as far as smart contracts go, which we'll get into um with a quick demo, it's it still feels very similar, very normal. You don't have to write like weird concurrent code. But for cross-user transactions, we're guaranteed that the execution of a given user's transactions within the block cannot be affected by users' transactions within that same block. And because of that, you know, as I mentioned, the only work that the proving network has to actually do is recursively verify using a tree verification, which proves eventually that the global state has mutated from some root to a new root. Um, but yeah, and we can do this process in parallel because, of course, I can take two proofs and on one node, you know, recursively verify them, on another node, also recursively verify two other proofs and then continue this process, you know, tree structure, very parallelizable. Um, specifically in production, we do a four to one. So we're taking four user proofs or four lower-layer proofs within the global user tree and recursively verifying them and generating a single succinct proof. Um, this operation takes about three hundred fifty milliseconds. So just to give you guys a little bit of context there, at three hundred fifty milliseconds on generating a thirty kilobyte proof, it means that each, you know, decentralized prover takes in thirty kilobytes plus a few, you know, Merkle proofs worth of data. Um, it can fit inside one packet, um pr- probably because we'll be using TCP at least for the foreseeable future. There'll be a couple packets, but um yeah. The the actual time it takes to do the network transfer is is very fast. Um, and then in addition, like, yeah, so we got three hundred fifty milliseconds um of proving time. Uh, so let's say it takes a hundred milliseconds to send the the data to the decentralized prover. Um, this is very, very conservative. Then we've got three hundred fifty milliseconds for the proving time. Um, we can calculate what our block time is gonna be as a function of the number of users that participate in a block. So let's do that. You'd say, you know, map dot L and or what should we say? Uh, let's say we have a million users, right? So good. Yep, I've got the right number of zeros. So we're gonna do times zero point four five or four hundred fifty milliseconds and let's see what we got. I guess I do have to do math log, sorry. Yeah, so in that case, uh we get a a block size or a block time rather of about um four and a half seconds. So yeah, you get a million users' transactions being processed in four and a half seconds, which is, you know,
It doesn't matter. Uh, I forgot to, I forgot to put my last uh, we are still source.
What? Sorry?
Yeah.
Oh, what was that?
Uh, can the host come mute a lot of people who have not muted?
Oh, yeah, no worries. Um, but yeah, so you know, we can see from here that um yeah, at these very conservative numbers like a hundred milliseconds to send, you know, less than sixty-five K uh is literally what can fit in one packet. So so yeah, four hundred fifty milliseconds, we get four point four eight seconds for the block time. Um, yeah, so that's like what uh two hundred and something, two hundred and change, uh thousand TPS. Um, and specifically, that's assuming that for these, if we actually look at the work that the network is doing, let me just pop that into play over here. We can see that the number of transaction proofs actually doesn't affect how many or how much work that the decentralized proving network has to do. So one, you pay a fixed gas fee for as many transactions as you like. You also pay for, you know, state slots that are non-zero that you've mutated. Um, but like, you know, there's plenty of scenarios where you're just mutating the same slick state slots over and over again. Let's say you have some kind of counter or dynamic NFT. Um, in those cases, uh the gas fee you pay and the amount of work that's done by the network is not even a function of the number of transactions within the block. As I mentioned, it's only the number of users. So when we say two hundred thousand TPS uh at a million users uh participating, that's assuming that each of those users only are transacting one transaction uh per proof chain. And uh in reality, we'd probably expect it to be more like two or three, which will put us um closer to five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand transactions uh per second. So yeah, oh, I've got the actual number, ha ha ha. Uh, but yeah, here we can see like, I guess, a longer proof chain, but I think we've kind of already gone into that. By the way, does anyone have any questions at this point? I know I've already talked for like quite a long time. Um, so before we sort of move on to some other topics, any questions right now?
One very quick question. So in this, is it true that like most game will fit into this pattern where most of the like thing that a user do will be an independent state from other users? So it can be highly paralyzed, but DeFi might not be able to do that. Like, for example,
So we will get to that. Um, this is why we have another. So this was actually coming up in where is the slide? Ah ha, over here. Um, so with bot users. So bot user, we have like, um, so on on QED, a user's public key is defined as the hash of verifier data for a zero knowledge circuit. So you can make a bot user which acts like a sequencer for inherently parallel op- or inherently serial operations for other like, I guess, um. So I I don't know if we'll get into too much because we actually have a blog post coming out very soon with a bunch of great diagrams. But we also have something called covenants. So you can imagine that, um, let's say I want to do a transfer to from one user to another and I want that user to do some action in return for, you know, me transferring them the tokens. Uh, when I burn the tokens for them, I not only include the user's, um, you know, ID and how much tokens have been burnt for them, I also include what we call proof debt um or or a covenant, which is the hash of several transactions that are appended to the claiming user's proof debt upon claiming the burnt tokens. And specifically what proof that is, is within our our user proving session with within that cyclic group oh, over here. Uh, we have this transaction proof debt and specifically the end cap um circuit, which recursively verifies the the last UPS transact as well as the user signature. It requires that the public inputs which correspond to your proof debt be zero um when you generate your end cap proof. So in order to like, I guess, pop an element from your proof debt hashtag, you need to do the UPS uh transact operation. So because of covenants, we can make it so that if a given user claims my tokens, then before they submit like their their proof to um their 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 final proving uh proof user proving session end cap to chain, they must also do some certain other um transactions. So let's say I want to do a trade with a given user. I'm trading them five USDT plus, I don't know, like an NFT for um ten QED token plus five other NFTs. Uh, what I would do is I would burn those items. And then in addition, I would use the burn with, uh, so we have in our like token contract standard examples. Um, we have a burn with covenant function. Uh, and specifically, you could just do like contracts, let's say contract ten, which is the NFT contract dot covenant dot transfer for the two and the transfer, you'd put your own user ID and then the NFT that you want from them. And that would mean that if they claim those tokens, then in their like, you know, in within their proving session before they submit on the the transaction or the transaction chain, which includes them claiming those burnt tokens, they must also transfer you the items that you requested. Otherwise, they can't generate the end cap proof. Um, and so this is used along with bot users. So as I mentioned, um, public keys on QED are defined as the hash of verifier data for a given zero knowledge circuit. Um, you can use this to build like ADEF multi sigs. Uh, uh, you know, we can support any public key crypto scheme that you like. Um, like, for instance, you can write a circuit which verifies a SEC P two fifty-six K one or SCP, SCP two fifty-six R one signature, of course, um as well as any signature scheme you like. But um another thing is we pass the um the hash or the linear hash of all the transactions that have occurred within your local proving session, um the state delta for the users um like tree leaf. Um, so that's gonna include all of your your state changes as well as the start state of the entire chain at the beginning of the block that you're proving at or at the beginning of the head that you're proving at. So you can also have a circuit which has no private key and whose signatures are governed by the state of the chain. So you can imagine if you wanna have, let's say, something like an order book. Um, the way that it would work is I will deposit uh or I will burn N tokens for this AMM or order book user. And in my covenant, I will include what transfer or what tokens I would like in return. And then later, the a a bot user, which is acting on behalf of the AMM, um, because, of course, our users are processing transactions for themselves serially, will then claim those tokens, claim all of the tokens for, you know, all the people that want to do swaps within um a given, you know, proving Claim those tokens, claim all of the tokens for, you know, all the people that want to do swaps within um a given, you know, proving session or within a given block. And then at that point, they've now claimed all the tokens for the various users and then they can route the tokens. Um, you know, doing the transfers that fulfill their covenants and eliminate their proof debt, um, ending with a, you know, of course, a. Uh, proof that hash of zero and being able to submit their end cap off to chain uh. Without it being possible for them to take or steal any of those users' assets, because again, um, in their like bot signature circuit. We enforce that they must only interact with these transactions, um, these specific like contract functions. And uh, yeah, they're not allowed to do any other transfers because again, it's a, the signature circuit is aware of which transactions took place within a given transaction. So we can have logic that depends on, um, you know, whether or not it allows you to generate a signature can be a function of. Like which transactions did you work with and also which, um, you know, state mutations did you make as well as the state of the global blockchain? So, yeah, um, there we can make fully trustless exchanges, Dex, AMM, order book, whatever we like. Um, but uh, yeah, that bot users are to be used only for purely like. Very inherently serial operations. Um, AMMs are one of those things. But uh, yeah, we also have for non, I shall we say, non serial state or global state variables. We also have map producers, so we can go into this a little bit, but um you can also define a global state variable for a contract. As a function which is a reduced across the users, so across the users' individual state trees. So you can imagine for a Dow, um, you don't need to use a bot user, you just have a like a a map reduce global variable. And for your global variable, for a given proposals, like, uh, I guess vote count. You're just going to define a map reduce variable which counts up the total number of people that have voted. As well as counting up the total number of people that have voted yes, and you define that map produces like. Um, you you get into the user state and I have the current state of the reduce and I'm going to say the yes votes are equal to this dot user or it's actually this dot state. Um, dot whatever proposal ID is in in brackets, of course, dot is yes, right? Um, and then we'll we'll append one to the number of users that participated in the boat. Um, so, so, yeah, and then the the one caveat with the map produce variables is that you pay a additional gas fee when you mutate a state variable in a contract. Which is used in the like computation of the map produce because someone needs to do the work. Of scanning through the tree and recomputing the the map produce. Um, fortunately, since it's all stored in Mer- Merkel trees, we don't have to go back into leaves that haven't mutated since we last computed the map produce. Right? Because like we we already, we know that that like Merkel cap hasn't changed. Um, and in addition, we can do the process fully in parallel. So some of the the proof mining work um that is done is also this this map produce work. So for for very inherently serial operations, you can use bot users. Um, but for most stuff that isn't like, shall we say, like. Purely trading, you can get away with not using bot users, although bot user, so bot users are great too. Um, and it kind of lets us build these um autonomous, trustless rollup of rollups that also share in the global state with of like. The the broader Q E D chain. Um, but yeah, I hope that answers your question.
Got it. That's a long answer.
Yeah. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, I I guess, um, we put a lot of attention and detail into making sure that all of this works with. All blocking applications that people currently use as well as, you know, web two more, I guess, scale, scale sensitive applications. So there's a lot of ways to accomplish many things on Q. Any other questions? No? Should we get into a demo? I've talked a lot. Any other questions for now? Otherwise, we'll move on. Five, four, anyone? No? Okay, cool. So now we can look at smart contracts on Q D. Um, so first of all, you can write in smart contracts in Q E D in TypeScript, JavaScript and Python on vanilla TypeScript, JavaScript and Python, I may say. So any web two developer that's already acquainted with, you know, TypeScript can use our ID, our web ID or VS Code plugin to really quickly hack out some contracts. We have a lot of great features that, uh, shall we say, are not present in uh in other smart contract ID IDs of the time. Like, I don't know, for instance, I can add breakpoints. I can call a function, we can step through. Two, so over here, I don't know if you guys can see, we're at this breakpoint, we can, we have a nice visual debugger, we can step through. And get a result. So, uh, yeah, even though. So much money, billions of dollars has been invested in Ethereum ecosystem. Uh, yeah, we still don't have a visual debugger for solidity that works well. Uh, remix tried to make one, but it doesn't really work. Um, yeah, we can also, um, in this case, uh, like I can generate a circuit diagram. Um, so we can actually see what the arithmetization is going to be for our given function. Over here, we can see that it's, you know, adding up these numbers. Uh, we can also generate like human readable latex. Um, specifically where we compile JavaScript, uh, TypeScript and Python to, it's called DAP and IR, which is our high level. Um, sort of, shall we say, generic constraint system. Um, or generic constraint definition language. And uh, like, you can imagine that we have a a tree of different operators. Um, which can also be self referential, so I guess it's not technically a tree. Um, we need to have self self references within our IR in order to support things like. Let's say we have a loop with a, you know, a number of iterations that's a function of the inputs of function or to the inputs of the contract function. Um, in that case, obviously, like, we can't express it as um concrete constraints, uh, but, you know, we have ways of. Uh, in lining those those loops, um, of course, for like, let's say, if I'm just in this case, uh, adding one number a bunch of times to some variable. That can be simplified to a multiplication. We have like some very strong heavyweight. Uh, simplification engines. Um, we use S M T lib two. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar to like express the constraints for our simplifiers. So like C three works among a few other sort of less computationally heavy uh simplification engines. Um, and uh, yeah, uh, you know, because we have faster proofing, um, if we want to generate a a pure, I guess, circuit definition. Um, for loops, we fall back to that have indeterminate number of steps, we fall back to recursive proof. Um, or as I mentioned, you know, we also have a start base VM that you can use for a contract function in that case, but uh, yeah, for for like. The vast majority of like blockchain contracts where there's not that much code being ran per per function call. Yeah, you could just generate a very, very, very concise circuit and you're going to have a lot better proving time. Um, significantly less like resource constraints for the prover, uh, if we just generate a a like a pure arithmetic station. So in this case, I added like N times N. So now we can see, oh, yeah, it's multiplying inputs by that. I can make it more complex. Function, function. Right? X, she ends, do it. It's just referring to a field element. We use Goldilocks field. Say, I don't know, X plus. I guess minus one. Right? Say, do you? And. File. And then we can lay tech, we can see the new updated lay tech. And if we look at our circuit diagram, we can see that the arithmetic station has been generated correctly. Right? So we're taking. Yeah, so, um, like for this online demo, we also have like circum generator, so we can generate like. A a working, this is mostly just for 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 demoing since we don't actually use circum anywhere in our stack. Like even our final like brought sixteen proof which recursively verifies our our plunk proof that's generated at the end of each block and to be sent off to different L ones. Um, you know, we're using ARC rather than than circum, uh, but you know, just for fun, like just kind, I guess, to show off the uh. All the greatness of of Dap and our and its flexibility, you know, we can generate circum. Um, if we then rename this to, what's the name? Some even odd numbers, we can see uh how few constraints that we're actually dealing with. Um, in this case, we have. Symbol A. My bad. Now I have to copy the flag. So we're expecting this result. If I do copy flats and then pop over here to inputs. And paste in our inputs. You can see that we got the correct answer. Hooray. So, yeah. Cool. So, yeah, that's uh, that's our idea. So we can also go into like how state works with contracts. So over here, we have our DAP and A B I explorer. So, uh, the way, since we support like different languages, we need some like calling interface and some state definition language where you can very clearly define, I guess. Um, how like your smart contracts exposed or public functions or external functions look. Um, so that I can call a Python contract from JavaScript a problem, um, as well as, you know, state topology, so I can reference another contract state, no matter what language I'm working with. Um, we can just play around with this, say. I don't know, we can make this a U N twelve array if I then could compile, you can see the different functions. So DAP and A B I is going to flatten your um contract function inputs because these will obviously be private inputs to our circuit. Um, or in the case if we're compiling to our start VM, then they're pushed to the stack. Um, at the start of execution, uh, we also have few functions just so that, you know, other contracts that want to access some computed state of a given contract. Like know how to do it, um, and uh, it makes it nice and easy for people that want to plug and play with your contract. We can also look at some state lookups. So over here, we have this test A variable if I want to know like what index it is. So the index is going to be the leaf within the um state tree for the contract divided by four, because each like state leaf is is for field elements, we're using Goldilocks field. So, uh, we use Poseidon to hash, so it's going to be, you know, four element algebra cache with a um sponge size of eight. So I do like one, two, three. Why is it not the index? Looks like so. Oh, there it is. Ha ha. I thought something was broken. Uh, we just need to scroll down. So if I try to access an array value that's outside of there, it's going to tell me, no, I can't. But if I try to get one, it's going to give me that index. If I go to three, it's going to increment it. If we delete all, I can also do like, I don't know, user dot. So this is really nice also, um, compared to solidity where you can't really nest these very large, like. Structures, right? You have to do like a mapping of a mapping of a mapping, um, which can get like very tedious. Uh, with Q D, you could, you know, do as many layers of of wonderfulness as you as you like. So, uh, over here, I can like make, I don't know, let's say, we want to have, uh, let's say, the S is going to be. Oh, the status, well. Quick compile again, we have this. Best be three dot. The S two. That. Yes, phones, you can see what the index is going to be. And, uh, yeah. Um, just wanted to show you guys a quick uh demo as well, just to clear up any confusion around. Um, like what a transaction actually looks like on chain. So this is just a very simplified state model. So over here, we don't have like a contract state tree or any of that, but, um, it may be helpful if we want to have some given token transactions that are occurring. Um, you know, the users can prove the different transactions, they're going to store the leaves, uh, including their balance, how much they've claimed from other users as as well as how much they've sent to other users. Um, and then, um, you know, we process those transactions, then the users send their end cap proofs. To the decentralized proving network and the decentralized proving network nodes are going to generate proofs which take in, you know, Merkel proves to the nearest common ancestor cap. Uh, which is going to prove some part of the the global state tree has mutated from one state to another. Um, and then we continue that process until we have a single succinct proof for the entire state tree. But, yeah. Um, any, any questions? Questions?
So maybe I will also ask a simple question. So to me, this live is. I I'm from, uh, I'm I'm from investment like, uh, in that investment fund. So basically that, is it a little bit similar to? A Leo, but you are not doing privacy, you are doing scalability by parallelization. And instead of do building a like language called Leo, you are actually trying to compile the circuit from type script. And, yeah, a little bit similar to that, right? Basically that compared with A Leo.
You get privacy with us too. So you prove all of your transactions locally, so the inputs that you give to the functions are not like, there is no. Like globally available record of which. Specific transactions I executed, but the only thing that the global state knows is that. My global state tree used to have this this these state values and now after this block, I have some other state values. So you do get privacy and specifically we have in circuit K D F gadgets, so you can encrypt in circuit and then. The data that's actually served on the global state is like symmetrically encrypted. And then when you go to, you know, mutate that state value in the future, then like it it decrypts it. So you you get privacy too. Um, yeah, but, uh, so I I don't really know about Ali. It's just Allos. Like such so unscalable that, ha ha ha. I I don't want to offend anyone or if anyone has any portfolios. But, uh, yeah, I don't know if it's a great comparison there. It's more like we are building a. Blockchain that can handle millions of concurrent users transacting within a block. Still get sub ten second block times. Um, fixed gas fees for as many transactions as you like. And you end the block with this single succinct proof of all transactions that occurred within the the given block and our end block group also recursively verifies the previous block group. So in fact, verifying one block which is equivalent to verifying all the transactions that have occurred within it, um, within the entire chain. So. Yeah, I don't know. We're we're a little bit different. We're a little bit different.
Well, I'm basically trying to, I I would say that a wa- uh, easy way to have understand like, for example, how big this company can be, how big this this business can be is type by comparison, right? Because if I think that you can do whatever like A you can do, you are more scalable and that like you also. Seems to provide easier interface for the user than for me, this seems to be like pretty good, especially A Leo is like using U T S O model. I believe that you are using account model, right?
Yeah, so we have full global state, um, like, yeah. Uh, I think perhaps a better comparison is, um, are you guys familiar with what BBSs were like before the internet? They used to be these these BBSs, which were kind of like websites or forums that you could call into, but they could only support like three or four users musk at once. So there were these internet communities where you would just call up, you know, someone's BBS that they, you know, they hosted, like this is pre T C I P. Um, and be able to like download files and all that, but it was always a very niche, small community because you couldn't handle users at large. A lot of people thought it was very cool, made a bunch of headlines, but eventually. When the internet came around, the BBSs went away. And I think. That is probably similar to Q E D and and. Perhaps Z came more broadly and and current blockchains.
Got it.
Yeah, um, we'll also have Python and some other languages supported as well. Uh, like. We're, we're very flexible also just because we store like. The the sort of definition of what a contract function is, is just the verification data. And then the first, the hash of the verification data and like, we also have another hash on top of that, which. The first element that we pass in that hash is like which proving back and we want to use. So we'll have support for like, we can compile. Your TypeScript or Python code to to mine in V M byte code as well, or let's say, I don't know, I want to use like Cairo or whatever, right? Once we have our, so we already have the winter fell verifier, um, it's currently being used for my data verifications, but we can. I believe there's Cairo implementations for for winter bell. Um, so we, I think it's winter fall with rescue hash, if I'm not mistaken, maybe. Not sure about that. Uh, I'll have to check, but, um, yeah, so really you could, you you'll be able to write in whichever language you prefer. Um, the only language that we will not be. Probably supporting in the near future is solidity because like. With solidity, every operation you do is like a big. You in two D six operation and we use like Goldilocks field, which is a sixty four bit field. So. Yeah, all the, all the native operations are mod a a prime that's less than sixty four uh or like sixty four bits in a little. Uh, or like sixty four bits and a little like sixty three and a half bits, let's say. Uh, of actual like data that we can store. So any operation that we want to implement with, with EVM is going to have a ton of non-native arithmetic. Which is, uh, not desirable, but, uh, yeah.
Would this project be purely layer one or that you also see this to be actually tightly related to layer two? Because you are already generally proved that agree proofs, right? What do you think about one day to?
At the end of the, at the end of each block, we end up with a single succinct proof. Of all the transactions that occurred within the given block, as well as all the transactions that have occurred in the chain history. And in the public inputs of the proof, we have the start and end states of the chain. As well as if we look back at our state diagram. These external chain trees. So what these are is, um, on Ethereum. When we, let's say, want to like, I don't know. Deposit into QED or run a transaction on QD. I, well, in the Ethereum contract, we have, are you guys familiar with the linear hash? I'm guessing probably, but anyways, it's just like saying hash state equals hash of hash state plus some event, right? So we have like, it's, it's kind of like a, a micro chain blockchain, um, shall we say? But, uh, yeah, only takes one storage, uh, slot in Ethereum. Um, this hash gets updated whenever we want to send data over to layer two. Uh, on QED, when we receive these events. We have a circuit which append the events to an external event data tree for the given blockchain. Um, and also in the public inputs of the proof, we repeat that same linear hashing process. So in our end proof, um, you know, in the public inputs, we have that linear hash that was sent to us from Ethereum. Um, and then we send the proofs off to a bunch of different layer ones, including Ethereum. They check the, to verify the proof, to verify the proof on chain. Make sure that the start state root matches the last state root they receive. And they also check to make sure that the correct events were sent. Or were reported sent by Ethereum to the layer two. And if any fraudulent deposits or other, you know, calls that were made from Ethereum were reported. Um, in the, uh, the external, um, data tree for Ethereum. Um, the Ethereum contract will reject the proof. So, yeah, so we have a trustless bridge, um, from layer one to layer two. And then of course, because we store the state root on chain. We also can, you know, verifiably check, like read any state value from, from QD on Ethereum. So from a positioning perspective and just from a functionality perspective. We are a layer two for Ethereum. We perform all of the operations that every layer two is expected to perform on, on Ethereum. However, we do this not just for Ethereum. But for all layer ones that we're like collaborating with. Um, so I guess. It's, it's kind of its own thing, but we'll, we like to brand ourselves as a layer two because layer twos are hot. But everything that layer twos do for Ethereum, QED also does for Ethereum. So, yeah. I hope that answered your question. It's kind of, it's kind of like, we are what we are. What is a layer two, right? What is the boundary? Um, but, uh, we definitely fulfill all of the, the same, I guess, services that we provide to Ethereum that every other layer two does.
About it. I probably will to wait to see whether other people have question because it would be, will you, I asked also the next one.
Please ask any questions. Anything?
Yeah, feel free to, uh, drop any questions in a, in a chat box as well. Um, I saw like there are thirty one of us, uh, which is great. Like as we having this, you know, discussion, uh, and more people coming in, um, into this session. Um, yeah, we have another question. Um. So the question is, where can I find more information about CK part? Um, can find it on your website?
Yes. So we have blog posts going up today. I'm actually like patching it together. Before this call, haha, but, uh, we'll have the blog post up today that goes through everything. Um, also goes into much more detail. Uh, we have a light paper right now. It's like. A little bit private, but if anyone wants to see it, if we have like, we generate, we make a Telegram group after this call. I guess some of the people that join probably aren't in, in a Telegram group. But, um, we could make a group or you can, you know, um, hit us up and, uh, you know, we can get you guys. Uh, light paper. Uh, we also already published publicly our like. Um, software defined or programmable public key cryptography paper. Uh, you can find that at publications dot QD protocol, uh, dot com slash S D key. But, uh, yeah, we'll have the, the part article up, uh, today at QD protocol dot com, uh, slash blog. Um, yeah.
Yeah, we.
For, for DAP and IDE in two months. So like, we won't be launching our test app for another couple of months. Cause right now, if we don't have the test app launched, you can't like make any state full. Contracts because you need to connect to a node. So it works for us because we have our own internal test that, but, uh, yeah, two months. We're, we're trying to do it, do it faster, but two months is our goal.
Great. Uh, we, we actually, we do have a ZK, um, hacker camp, uh, Telegram group. Um, so later I think I'm going to drop the link here. Uh, feel free to join in and also like Cutter, you can also, uh, we're very welcome you to, to join the, uh, into the telegram group as well.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, probably this is a engineering question that is that how difficult do you think it is to have implement this entire system? This is also related to A leo because A leo have been taking a very long time. And that like you have the language, you have the compiler, but I also have the chain. I think eventually the consensus in the chain to the most of the time for the entire project development. What do you think? Do you think that this like basically the chain, you already have a test net internally, right? And it's functional.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Then I'm not too concerned.
And the decentralized provers. So like, we made a very big point also to separate. So we have our data availability miners that prove random like leaves Merkel proofs. Uh, within a, a, a given block. But the decentralized provers do not have to have a full copy of the state root to participate in that four to one work. Cause we want like, you know, all the different users of QD to be proving, um, on the client side. That way we can, you know, achieve our, our very high TPS. And also users don't have to go to Binance and buy, you know, tokens, uh, in order to, you know, get enough tokens to, uh. Go about sending a transaction because you can just mine and then, yeah, just claim your tokens and transact for free. So. So, yeah. We, it's all, it's all done. We're, we're working on like block explorers, wallets, uh, documentation, samples. There's a lot, there's a lot beyond like just making the notes offer, but the core stuff is done.
Got it.
Yeah, great. Uh, maybe we can take one or two more questions. If you have any questions, feel free to drop in a chat box. Um, I also like draw up one of the links, um, of our, our Telegram group. Um, so for those of you who are not in Telegram, good, definitely you can access into that. Um, and later I think I'm going to look in, uh, Carter as well. If you have any more questions, uh, we can type. Uh, into the group chat and, um, and then we, we will find your time to, to solve your questions.
Yeah. So, um, yeah. So, uh, yeah. If you also want to learn more, can also visit, uh, twitter.com slash QD protocol. You know, shameless plug, but, uh, uh, yeah, any other questions? And also if anyone's going to be at SBC, um, so like, we're currently not there, we'll be there, I think on the twenty fifth or the evening of the twenty fifth. Um, yeah, looking forward to, uh, meeting a bunch of you guys if you will be.
Um, okay, I think there are no more questions. If they have any questions, they would definitely like, you know, uh, tap in and, and in a group chat as well. All right. Um, thank you very much for your time and thanks everyone for attending this session. Uh, we're going to have a ZK hackathon, uh, going on and the demo day is on, uh, September fifteenth. So if you're in Singapore, um, and if you're interested in your hackathon, definitely check it out. Um, yeah, we're, we're also going to be like, maybe CD also going to be in, uh, SBC as well. Um, drop us a, a message there, um, and feel free, uh, to reach out to us. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Carter, for your time.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
Great. Take care. Bye.